The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, it is 5:30 according to my time clock. So we will begin our work session. Good evening, we're members of the Board of Education. We are proudly joined by two students from the Inter-City Student Council, Teresa Skaleski from East and Jacob Gosser from Southwest. Thank you for joining us. And we will begin with an open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the Board at the open forum? All right. Not going to beg you. So we will move on to our teaching and learning work session, which has no agenda this evening. So we will move on to our organizational support work session. And that's going to be facilitated by Chris White.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Chris.
First I have talked about purchasing and bid procedures. That we would talk about first time.
And again, the purchasing policy that you have before you, and four people on our committee, Dave Teed, Executive Director of Purchasing and Distribution, Diane Derr, Charlotte O'Neil, Technology Officer, Melissa Field Coller, and myself. And again, the policy was to kind of take a look at all the purchasing procedures that we have and try to put them into a policy for the Board to review. And we looked at the RFP process, the request for proposals versus the bidding out, getting quotations. And we put together the policy that you have before you. I guess you would answer or reply to any questions or comments that you have regarding the policy. Do you want?
If I could just interject one thing. A lot of this is not doing, I mean, we've been doing this since I've been in the district. So as far as the bids and quotes and the RFPs, we've been doing that since I came.
If I understood your cover memo correctly, we hadn't had anything in place, we're just sort of doing. Is that fair statement?
The policies were very old regarding the purchasing part. And so we're really, again, putting together a document of pretty much what we have been doing over the past years because we have been doing request for proposals and we have been doing bids and quotes. And Dave takes care of a lot of that. It usually takes care of what the request for proposals. Whether it's textbooks, computers, you name it. Dave has done an RFP.
In the policy, second paragraph, there's a line that says, "Good quality within limits of budget." And I'm not quite sure what that means. Does that mean if there's not enough money, you settle for something cheap? Or what?
What page is that?
Second paragraph of the policy.
The one that says, "Decisions on purchases shall be based on specification."
I don't hear that part from me, I just had a note for myself. The line, I, the phrase that said, "Good quality within limits of budget." That phrase concerned me. The implication is, if we don't have the money, we won't necessarily get good quality. And I'm assuming we would like to get good quality, no matter what we spend.
I think the intent of that was that if we have a budget limitation, but we want to get a specific product out of a service, we may not be able to get all that particular product out of our service in that given timeframe. It doesn't mean we go to a more quality product.
I would personally appreciate if you could maybe work, rework that line a little bit. And the second, anybody else, I'm sorry? Under emergency purchases. And I understand that has to be happening. Perhaps you could give a couple examples of that. And again, what was the dollar limit for emergency purchases before coming to the Board?
Chris, are you on?
The letter you have the rule, 672 rule?
Probably. I mean, I didn't, I don't.
It's on page three.
I should take my notes better, I just wrote there.
I mean, your emergency purchases, I'm sure if one of our generators goes out, it's something that we're going to have to buy right away. If it's a cooler for food service, if food service has coolers that break down and we need to replace them, we certainly need to do that right away. You know, rather than have, you know, in some cases, we'd have to bring in a refrigerated truck to put the food in there when a cooler has gone down. So it would be those type of items that, you know, we would consider to be emergency purchases.
What was the dollar amount, go up to you on that? Prior to coming to the Board, or?
The dollar amount, I think, was at like the $5,000?
There was no, in the previous policies, there was no dollar limit for emergency purchases. In comparing other policies from other districts, as we've outlined for you, there, all the policies that we looked at made provisions for emergency purchases. I did not find limits because it's an emergency. And so, as Alan explained, a generator could be very expensive.
I did see something there somewhere, again, forgive me for not taking better notes. Something like up to $100,000 that the Assistant Superintendent for Business Finance would have the ability to make? Or am I mixing up with something else?
Yeah, on page one of the rule, it talks about the, what the dollar amounts would be before, that for services, we would have a visit quotations if it was between $50,000 and $99,000, between $50,000 and less RFP if it was $100,000 or more. For equipment, it was the same range. We will do a bid quotation, $50,000, but if it's $50,000 or less than $100,000. And RFPs for items that are over $100,000, dollar purchases. And in construction, we had a little higher amount for bids and quotations, $100,000 to $199,999. And anything over $200,000 would have to be a request for proposal. So for those three different areas, we have put down, again, when we will do bid quotations versus when we would do request for proposals.
And if I read it correctly, Alan, and this is nothing against you, please understand that that rests with you, goes no further to make those decisions on those dollar, up to those dollar amounts?
Well, some of the items will be brought to the Board for someone.
I think you started with the emergency purchase.
Well, any of them, I mean, again, I saw that limit in there before coming to the Board. I mean, I guess I wasn't tracking it well, that's why I'm asking for explanations on this. It looked to me like there was fairly up to $100,000 certain areas that you could, on your own volition, make the determination. And if that's correct, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that and whether or not the superintendent should be involved. Somebody else, sort of a fail-safe system. Again, it has nothing to do with you as a person, just a procedural.
So if I can, if you look at page three in the rule, with respect to, the bidding requirements are less formal, given that it's a less dollar amount. The request for proposals will all come to the Board and the Board will make the determination. The district will make a recommendation and much like what Diane has already brought forward with respect to the purchase of technology. The bids, because it's a lesser amount, less formal, there's requirements in the policy as to when bids must be obtained, how that process looks. In those bids, the Board would be advised of all contracts entered into the purchase of equipment, material, and services made pursuant to a bid or quotation. The CFO or his or her designee will reserve the right to reject any bid or quotation. And in the event that a bid or quotation is rejected, they must all be rejected or republished in the manner provided by Board policy and procedure. So yes, the forbidding, the CFO will govern those bids and determine who is awarded those bids in quotation, with keeping the Board in advise of who will be awarded those.
So the bidding items only come to the Board as an information item then?
Correct. With the understanding that what the bidding procedure is. And the bidding procedure is outlined here in the rule as to how those bids are put out, what the evaluation criteria are in making the determination as to how a bid is awarded.
And again, all of that rests then on Alan's shoulders to make the decision day or night? It doesn't go by the superintendent or anyone else? And it's up to $100,000?
Up to, up to $100,000 for service and equipment, up to $200,000 for construction.
Again, if it's just me, so be it. I just like fail-safe systems where somebody else also takes a look at that. My world, $100,000 is a lot of money. So I don't know whether somebody else, like the superintendent should take a look at it or also sign off on it or whatnot. And it's just a general concern I have procedurally.
Well, let's talk about whether $100,000 is a lot of money. I understand what your concern is. I mean, if we were to resurface a parking lot at West of one of our smaller high schools, wouldn't that be in the $50,000 range?
I don't know what resurface.
Oh. Dave, do you know?
West is relatively small. It would probably be in that neighborhood, it would be just off the top of my head, I guess.
Yep, you know, a roof, that's right. I mean, I.
It might be more, the city's now requiring various studies for rainwater.
Water, groundwater, yeah.
So it's likely to be more.
Well, then that does get to be more involved. Hmm, okay. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I just don't, I think if it does, it always goes fast.
Well, I don't want anybody being positioned, and right now I'm talking about Alan, his position, to somebody to come back and say, "Well, your favorite has been shown to certain firms and nobody's checked on it." And that's why in my mind, if somebody also at least eyeballs and signs off on it, that's protection for him.
But I would expect that there would not be, that we would not pick the lowest bidder, if that is the concern. I mean, there would have to be reason given to not choose the bidder with the lowest bid, the lowest proposal.
Would there be, and I'm going to ask legal counsel this, would there be a checklist? I mean, really, if you follow the procedures laid out in the policy, that's your checks and balance. My question is, would there be something that needs to actually be acknowledged? Did I did this, I did this, I did this? It's all laid out there? I mean, or something, you know, I mean.
Dave's department is actually very transparent. The bids and the requests are all put out on the district website.
Okay.
And the bids and the request for proposals provide what the criteria are, what we're asking for, how bids and requests will be scored. And then all of that is subject to, once a bid or a request for proposal is finalized and awarded, all of the underlying bids and requests for proposals are subject to an open records request. So we do have a number of vendors who, once the award has been made, will request those to see why they were not awarded the bid or the request. And so that's a very transparent process when we get into this, especially with the use of the website and the use of the scoring mechanisms that Dave's department has already developed. This is not a departure. Currently, there are no limits. And the reason we're asking for a policy is we get a number of requests from staff. When is a request for proposal required? When is a bid required? When are we the only game in town and no request for proposal or bid is required? So this really just outlines how we've been operating and puts it on paper so that there's transparency for vendors, the community, and district staff.
If I'm hearing you correctly, then you're saying, to the superintendent's question, there is a paper trail and it is held, that paper trail is held for how long?
Dave, how long?
Seven years.
Seven years, so is it subject to audit? Every year, when we have auditors come in?
The auditors look at the projects. I wouldn't say that they would look at every bid on every project, but yes, they do look at the larger dollar items, especially because they have to be earmarked as capital assets within the financial statements.
Well, I'm much more comfortable with that, there's a solid paper trail.
Ultimately, other than an emergency purchase, say something was $40,000, ultimately, doesn't the Board vote on that usually before it would be expended? Unless it falls under the emergency category, or not necessarily?
Well, right now, when they come to the Board, they are not, we have not purchased the items before the Board approves.
Except for that emergency clause, which would allow for that.
Okay. I mean, the other one that's in here is there are certain items that only a certain vendor has that item. In the case of that, you would order them from that company if they are the only, the only place that we can get, the only vendor that has that. And it doesn't happen often, I'm just saying there are some times where there is only one vendor. It's rare, but it is another item we have in the policy.
And that's in the policy?
It's number seven on page two.
And then, I guess my only other question, although it's much less of a big deal to me than it was before I asked that question, is ultimately, any Board member can examine the list and choose to, you know, pull something out for a separate vote, so that's fine. I guess my only other, my only other question is, what are we, what exactly are we doing when we say on the screen here, general guidelines, number two? It is recommended that for contracts or purchases of values less than those noted, quotations be sought where applicable? It sounds like you're saying, I don't know what "it is recommended" and if, where applicable even means in a policy document.
Sure, if I can explain. Bids and quotations are required for those amounts that you see listed in the table, starting at $50,000 for service equipment and $100,000 for construction. It's recommended that if the amounts are lower than that, that bids and quotations still be sought. The where applicable is the qualifier because there's a number of provisions here in this rule where bids and quotations would not be required, such as for the emergencies or if those are the only goods or services offered by one company for that particular item that you're looking for. So if it's $10,000 for, let's say, a dig computer. For an Apple computer. Apple's the only one who manufactures the computer. We would be seeking, the limit would fall below the bid and quotation. It's recommended you would seek a bid or quotation for that computer. Apple's the only game in town, so no bid or quotation would be sought.
Okay, so where applicable would be construed as to refer to elsewhere in the policy document?
Correct.
But it is recommended, isn't that legally a big ol' wash if someone doesn't feel like it? I'm not saying we wouldn't feel like it, I'm just saying, doesn't recommend it almost make that pretty weak?
Well, if you don't want, it is recommended for items lower than that, then those numbers should be 0 to 99 in the service and equipment and then 0 to 199 for construction.
Okay, so I guess, I guess I just say no. I mean, and I'm sure we probably do it most of the time.
Even if it's not close to those dollar amounts, I mean, if there is a product that comes in and they've noticed before vendors that have that product, it's going to make a call. They may not be a request for proposal, we may not send out bids and ask them to come back. I mean, but.
You might formally say, "Give me a quote."
You make phone calls and in 10 minutes, you may have the lowest bid. Especially for the ones that are, you know, smaller dollar amounts. It's not something we would do for construction items.
Right, but it makes sense to do it in that manner, so it's less.
I mean, for the most part, we try to get the best price we can, whether it, and some places, it is by asking for a quick quote or a bid or making phone calls. And again, you know, with Dave's experience in the purchasing, he knows, he knows who are the people who got the lowest prices, for the most part.
We do that now, I mean, even a $10,000 purchase, we'll get two or three quotes on it. You know, most of them come in via email now. I like it that way because you got a paper trail to do it, and we do that now.
Any other questions? So move on to policy and procedure to the Board meeting. Alan, while you're sitting there, a question. I mean, the paper recently indicated that our district would be getting $6 million more in revenue. Would you explain that, please?
Based on the July 1 calculation, which is an estimate from the EPI, they do a calculation every July.
Point of order? Excuse me, I don't know.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda. Sorry, Chris, I mean, it's not, I mean.
Well, please put that on the agenda for next week because I like a clear definition, explanation of this for our public. Because right now, in the paper, it looks like we've got a balance of $6 million.
Right, right. And that does need to be clarified, unfortunately, we can't do it at this moment in time.
I appreciate that. I don't appreciate it, but I appreciate it.
But you'll be gracious about it, Chris. All right, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Joan. Under Human Resources.
Are we done with that?
That was it, wasn't it? Did you have more, I'm sorry?
I mean, revision considerations, RFP policy comparison, did you want to go over that too, or no?
I guess I'm not seeing any on my agenda here.
The comparison was just for your reference?
Yeah, that was all.
Okay, just checking, make sure.
He checked with us, we're fine.
Okay, cool.
You okay? Okay.
All right.
Ms. Marsh?
Cool is probably not part of penalty procedure, I'm not sure that it is, but. Cool, cool. All right, Chris, you have one more?
Under Human Resources, we have a recommendation to add the job description for the Coordinator of the ELL English Language Learners Programs. This is, if this job description is approved, it would be for an existing employee to assume this role. And it expands on the job that this individual is currently doing, but would ensure that the district meets all of our state and federal ELL accountability requirements. The person has the skills and is doing some of these things, but we would be adding to it and there would be a higher level of accountability and the person who works on it.
Excuse me, Jean, could you speak into the microphone? Because every time you speak, a guy in the back goes crazy holding things up. So if you could speak into the microphone, thank you.
This is a new position, Coordinator of English Language Learners Programs. And it would be filled if the Board approves this job description. Next week, we would recommend an internal person who's currently working in a similar capacity, but this adds a full-time position. She's a teacher contract, she would become a supervisor and so be working 12 months and would have additional responsibilities, overall accountability for these programs. You're well aware of the size of the ELL programs that we have. Almost 25% of our students in the district, all under Julie's leadership. And so this would be a person who she could count on. Lots of testing, lots of principal work involvement. Anything else, Julie, that the person does?
As Jean mentioned, this is a current teacher position with 35 additional days. So the person is currently working almost in 11 months.
Yes?
It says here, experience, leadership experience, blah, 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 successful teaching ESL and/or bilingual education, English as a second language. And then we have ELLs, English Language Learners, maybe, I don't know. I think maybe you should put English as a second language instead of ESL there. And access is a, what is access? It's an acronym?
It is, I don't know it off the top of my head.
We'll spell it, we'll spell it.
Then spell that out, yeah, that'd be good. And that's just, that's all.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. One of the things when we discuss this position, the importance of building capacity with our principals has really been a great concern, particularly as they be in buildings where more and more of the students are receiving services for English language. And so as a result of that, that's one of the key components that I think cabinet really felt this was an important position. Because we cannot possibly provide a supervisor for all the principals to just evaluate our bilingual teachers and our teachers who are supporting students who speak two languages. And so this will, she will be holding professional learning sessions for our leaders and really for our teacher leaders and really building capacity in buildings so that they can do the evaluations and know that the teachers are teaching in the best way we know. So that, I think, has great potential and really important for our building leaders and for our teacher leaders in buildings.
Okay, we'll move that on. Ms. Marsh, I'd appreciate the next Board meeting, rat the Board meeting update on where we are with positions for a fall. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm afraid to say.
You're afraid to say? Good, hold that one. All right, that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We did it in less than a half an hour, good job, guys. Students enjoyed this, this doesn't often happen.
It never happens, right.
We, however, have a closed session.
Well, because all the fun is over for us, right.
Thank you very much for coming.
You're having a good time.
You guys are out of your clothes. Smile off your face. They just were awesome. Special Board meeting closed session is scheduled for Monday, August 4th, 2014, immediately following adjourned of the work session meetings, beginning at 5:30 PM at the District Office Building, 200 South Broadway, Green Hill Square, Parkwood 203. Pursuant to Statute 19.85, where it's considered a employment compensation compensation, performance evaluation of the public employee under which the governmental body has. Considering financial, social, personal histories, which is very data-specific, considerations of specific personal problems or the investigation charges against specific persons, except for a fee applies, which hip discusses something of the lighting issue. Such as the reputation of a disrespected person, such as history or data, or problems of investigation into individual personnel matters pursuant to Statute 19.85, where it wants to be deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties and asking for funds or conducting other specified public duties, whatever kind of territory. Bargaining reasons to acquire a closed session. And we're also trying to negotiate that sort of.
There you go.
Employment promotion compensation, performance evaluation of any public employee.
I do.
Has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to this. Employee compensation pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, where it wants to be confirming that legal counsel of the governmental body who is rendering oral or written by a concerning strategy to be adopted by the body, in respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved to a potential litigation matters. Meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session settled by the law.
So move.
Second.
Go ahead, please, Sandy. Epperson?
Hi.
Laka?
Hi.
Hi.
Maloney?
Aye.
Epperson? F600, one closed session. Sandy? These are sitting by managers.